Good evening, everyone. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order at this time. Please turn off cell phones, electronic devices to off or vibration. And Mr. Rick Morris, would you please read us in our prayer and pledge this evening's service?
Hello. Thank you for this day created for us and the blessings we're receiving from it. I ask your blessings upon every person here and the families they represent. Bless this council as we have very important issues to consider. Help us be patient. Help us have insight and knowledge to make decisions that's good for the city of Ballinger and every resident who live here. I'll pray this in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Rick. All right, consider approval of the minutes of the September 16th, September 20th, and October 7th, 2019 meeting. Can I have a time of the code?
I see this.
I'm seeing this.
There's two. When we go to three? Bob, you read the paper?
I don't read anything. I trust you, Bob, with that. And her spelling is horrible.
Trust me, but Tom, that isn't hard.
All right, I didn't.
It's so bad, still shaking, big as hell.
Okay, is that right? All right. Motion to set the minutes as presented.
What move?
Second.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Right, any citizen who desires to address the city council on a matter not included on the agenda may do so at this time. Per the Open Meeting Act, the city council may not deliberate on items presented under this agenda item. All presentations are subject to a five-minute timer. Yeah. Is anyone who wish to speak? Wow, everybody's quiet. This is curious.
I have another question.
Yes, sir.
The sign's out there that says vote no. What is that for? Says vote? On the vote, the proposition C.
You want to confirm?
Well, I haven't seen the sign.
So it says?
It's on the proposition C. Basically, when we change the charter, going from what we have now to a, what is it, a council?
That proposition C is changing us from right now, we have what you call a weak city manager form of government. Right now, our charter says that all employees have to be approved by the city council. And so what this is, is that it's a common for most cities of this size, and we have a city manager, to have a city manager form of government. And what that means is, is the council hires a city manager. They then set policies and procedures that they want him to follow, them or her to follow. And that that city manager essentially hires all employees. He's responsible for the performance of the city. And we have, in like what that proposition C says, the council still will approve certain department head positions. They'll also approve or disapprove of any terminations of certain department head employees. But in general, the city manager will be the one responsible for personnel of the city. It's kind of what that changes. And most cities, I think the only city that I've ever visited that doesn't have that is a home rule city, is like the city of Deion. But they already mention a city manager in the charter. So they're, they're kind of a different animal, I think. There's only two types of cities you can have, a general rule city, general law city, and a home rule city. And so we're a home rule city here at Ballinger. So it's, the general law cities don't have a city manager. So I think kind of what happened is, is that we went from general law to home rule, but we didn't really take the full step to be a home rule city in a traditional way. It's not that they're wrong with it, it's just that's not the typical way it's done. But you can do the charter any way you want to, basically. But this way will basically make it, for example, right now, the police department is kind of an island that the council has to manage. And of course, it's difficult for the council to manage employees because they're part-time. They're not employees, they don't work here. They're only meet, they have to meet. If they meet, they have to publish an agenda and give a 72 hours notice. So it's very difficult for them to manage a department, so to speak. And that's the way it's kind of set up, all our police chiefs, the manager. But for them to have responsibility of the department, the way it is now, it makes sense kind of have to, it's awkward, think that way. It's difficult. Because you have to have a meeting to have.
So it shouldn't be, so it shouldn't be the city manager running it at all, right?
That's, that's the way most cities do, their home rule.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. And, you know, it's not like it's anything radical or anything like that.
So why, why, why are they pleading if that's, if they should, if they should just give it to the city manager?
Well, there has to be voted on. All these amendments to the charter change, to the change in the charter, have to be voted on. It's not something they just turn over. It has to be voted into general election.
The whole thing, it should be the city manager should run all of it.
Then you need to vote either.
Yes. So that's what it is, yes.
Otherwise.
There's no signs, there's no.
Yes.
Well, that's, that's obviously somebody's political sign that they have up.
One person that's.
That's what they change.
If, if the council hires the manager, why shouldn't the manager be in charge of his people? He's the one that works with them every day, is my question.
That's the theory.
I mean, yes, yes.
That's the theory behind the city council, city council, city manager form of government. Because it's very difficult for a volunteer council to run the day-to-day operations of the city. That's why they hire a city manager. Because at the end of the day, they can't run the day-to-day operations of the city. It's impossible.
In Proposition C, Sam, it just revises if it votes yes, something that's been in place since 63 or something like that, is that right?
And you see, it modifies to adopt what's in place.
Since the charter's revision, it's been in place a long time, right?
I had a question concerning that, because there's a rumor going around town that all those Prop C signs are illegal because they don't have the actual required writing on them that is required on those signings for any type of thing. And I was just curious if that was true or not. That they have to have that paid for by, and say who they're paid for by, and some other information on them to be legal.
They do. They should. But I don't get, I don't have to put them out to even, yeah.
Well, so someone could go and take them out? Put them down?
Now you're reporting to. According to Texas Department's commission.
I know, I know. But isn't it a federal offense for them putting them up?
No, it's, no, it's a federal offense.
Oh, okay.
It's a, I think Texas. They'll, they'll write up a complaint. If it's true, then they'll make a file.
And if you don't remove them in a second time or something like that.
Correct.
Are those in the same category as the county?
They are.
They are.
Because they fall under political signage.
All right. Ready? All right, thank you. All right, city council may consider, discuss, and authorize approval of authorization to the Ballinger Fire Department to apply for a grant with Walmart Foundation.
This was similar to the one that the police department applied for at the last council meeting. In fact, the wording is just the same. We just used, instead of police department, it's the fire department. Going backwards, sorry. I was informed by the fire department that they were applying for that as well. And so just asking for permission to apply for and receive that grant from the Walmart Foundation. Twenty-five hundred, I believe it is.
O two five thousand.
O two five thousand, really.
I made the motion to your session.
All in favor, say aye. So, so. First, second, third, and fourth. Thank you, thank you. All right, city council may consider, discuss, and authorize action to approve the 2020 holiday schedule.
The schedule's the same as the state of Texas, is that right, Bob?
Can we have it per up here?
Yeah, yeah. Sorry.
There it is.
Yes, okay. So this will be the statements in the state of Texas. And we've kind of been adopting the same schedule as, some of our work depends on dealing with the state and also the county. Because I believe the county follows a very similar day-off schedule, probably schedule.
I tried to stick with the state, same thing.
Right.
Any questions?
I noticed that Columbus State is not on there. You did take that off?
Apparently. Well, that, that was, that was for last year. I mean, this will be the new, the new year.
Any questions? All right, motion to approve the 2020 holiday schedule.
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. City council may consider, discuss, and authorize action to approve the dispatching contract with Ronalds County. Is this a different one?
This is a different dispatching agreement. Before, with the, with the budget talks, I guess it came out. They sent that to us, I believe, September, the original agreement. And they had asked for 55,000. We sent back a counter offer of 28,000. They've come back with this, and this is what we were paying last year. So there won't be no change from what we paid last year.
Forty-five thousand, is it?
Yes. I believe that's right. Is that correct? Yeah, this, this year is forty-five.
It seems a bit steep to me, but that's my opinion.
I think they're Austin, I believe.
What about dispatching for the fire department? Who does that?
They do that as well. But they have all the dispatching in the county.
We might want to make that, this says right now, crucified dispatch services to city law enforcement offices.
Does that cover the fire service agreement we have with the separate ones?
It would be, but I, I haven't seen it.
That's where it is. See, I remember seeing that, so that's.
Was that recent? I can't remember.
Was it only earlier in the year?
Yeah.
So we have a separate agreement for fire dispatch?
Yeah. We pay them the left fee? No. They pay them the right fee. That's right. That's the 10,000, isn't that? Okay. They pay us 10,000 for fire services. That's right. In the county, in the county, yeah.
I don't think that any of the fire departments ever get charged for dispatch. It's kind of, I don't know. I don't remember it ever being. It's always been pay for police dispatch, and that's how they dispatched everybody out.
Questions?
It's been that way for a long time, just not been here.
If it's something we need to mention.
Well, I think that agreement, I know I have to be in there in one of our agreements, so that must be it.
Right.
Any other questions? You?
On that scope of services, number one, that, it says there, the agreement is that they're gonna answer our phone 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So we're paying $45,000 a year to answer the phone? Do we need to answer the phone? For 911? Well, that's not through the PG. They're offering 911 services, huh? They don't come through the PG.
So what they do, whether, whether our people are there or not, you know, if our people are there, say Martha, or, you know, Stan is in the office, then they can pick up the phone. If they're away, if they're away for some reason, it automatically goes to dispatch services. It's just a catch-all. I mean, you know.
We're really paying for that, I think it's just.
No, I should mention.
That's all it says. The scope word is, they answer the phone 24 hours a day.
Right.
Doesn't say they're gonna dispatch via radio or anything like that. It says they're gonna answer the phone.
I think that's the second part of it. The first part is they'll provide dispatch services to the city all day, Monday through Friday, all day, seven days a week. So then the second part is, and they also will answer the phone 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Okay.
I might be wrong, but I'm pretty sure they answer the phone all the time. But if they don't, you have the ability to answer.
Yes.
That's how it's possible. So they really do take every call.
Right, right.
Except for.
So the system of answering the phone, you've got to.
Well, there are main line reads out there.
The base answer from their, from their phone, right?
No, not for cell phones.
No?
No.
Oh, okay.
Not currently. Maybe when we get our new system in place. Because we build a, it's called SIMR, people just go in the ring down that green. I'll hook you up. Say, no, this is my deal. Things will speed, but y'all are in for it. I don't want to bait on it because I'm gonna install it.
Well, it is, you know, they were asking for 55, so they did decrease it by, what, 10,000?
But they left us alone. Because it was already 45.
Right. Well, that's true, yeah.
Just what it was like.
Did the amount of calls go down from last year to this year? I mean, would it have more phone calls or less? I mean, that would probably be a good gauge of how much you're gonna be using.
Well, I don't know about per calls, per se. I mean, we could get that information. But the, what they were using is, is the population. Say you take the population of Ronalds County and then divide however much, you know.
You're doing percentages, basically.
Right, right. And, and then you start looking at double digits, right? Because you're also paying city and county taxes if you live in the city. Okay, so then they take half of that, and, I mean, they, they use this number to justify their, their move to 55. And with their numbers, it was actually, should have been 65,000. But, you know, there were some other things that were going on there with the fire department. And so, anyway.
What does Winters pay coming?
I cannot remember. I'd have to go look. And Miles as well.
I'd say Winters was gonna be like 30,000, but it was like $10,000 to 10,000.
But, I mean, we, from my understanding, the majority of calls come from the city of Ballinger. I mean, by far, so.
But they actually did all cities. Everybody.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they covered the whole county.
But all cities want to have 10,000 on this. Any other questions?
Change, change, 45, 35, 25.
All right. Any other questions? Prove it, don't prove it?
I don't like it, but, you know, I mean, see how those, I don't know what those ideas are. Push what you want to. They pay us $10,000 for all their fires.
Yeah.
And 45,000, those answer phones.
And that went down.
I don't know. But that's how like they should be getting more. They should be paying us 45,000 for the fire. 10,000 for phones.
That's too bad.
That's, that's, that amount?
Yes, ma'am.
What it was last year.
What did the other cities do? Because I know they all were fine.
Yeah, but I don't know how, how much they were.
And I know it wasn't a combined effort. This is the first year I can ever remember every city or county saying no.
Well, from my understanding, they went ahead and, and paid whatever they were asking after, after this time has gone by.
Miles did?
From what I'm understanding.
I knew Winters was, but I wasn't sure about Miles. Miles was still kicking it last time I talked to him.
Right. But what I understand, and I haven't confirmed it, but both Miles and Winters went ahead with whatever they were asking for.
Because at first, they were gonna do the same thing we did. They reduced what we were going to.
Right. And, yeah, and I think they did. Both of them sent in, like us, a reduced amount. I don't know what happened in there, when they flipped around or swapped or. But last I heard, both Miles and Winters paid what they were asking.
At least they went with what we were paying for, and they didn't insist on 55,000. They asked for.
I mean, I have a question. So they get them all, probably they have to. So the fire has to wait for, for the dispatch to call in? How is that?
On the dispatch, they handle everything, whether it be a, a dog call, a fire, a fight somewhere, you know, where the police have to get involved. And that's not just in the city, it's in the county. It's, you know, where the sheriff is involved, or if it's in the city of Miles or in the city of Winters.
So it goes out to all of them?
Everybody. They handle everything.
But you can hear it when they're answering. You can hear all of them on the other end.
Right.
You don't have to wait for them to call you.
Mr. Jay.
So just going back to the point that Jason made. I, I don't think 45,000's unreasonable for the amount of people that they have to have, and what their people get paid and things like that. I think that's reasonable. What I think is unreasonable is what Jason pointed out, that they're only paying us $10,000 when they go out and respond to one fire, and our cost is higher than that. So I think that's something that needs to be looked at in the future. And if that hasn't been finalized for this year, that's what needs to be looked at. Is the funding coming to our fire.
They looked at that very thing two years ago when I brought that here.
This year too.
One fire could eat up four-five tires, and then we're way beyond 10,000.
Right. That happened last year, it made top of the fire.
Sixteen, seventeen years with a no. And then we joined, created Ronalds County Fire Force Station. So we hit them as a whole, as a whole county just years, and they still play the, we don't have any money.
We've been going at it.
That, to me, is a much bigger issue here.
Yes. We don't disagree. We've been going at it for the last six, eight years.
Every year. Maybe we need to find other resources for.
Our paper firms.
We talked about that.
I don't know. I mean, my, my question still stands. What are they gonna do? They're not gonna stop taking 911 calls.
The fact that they didn't make us go to defeat.
I mean, all 911 calls still go there. They just, I don't know.
Do you want a hard fact?
They're just trying to afford it, not everybody. If it's a non-mercy call, why does it need to go to dispatch unit? Everybody knows 911, quick call, real trouble. My opinion.
Jason, nobody really called their hand.
I'm sorry?
Nobody's really called their hand.
Nobody's, nobody stood their ground.
What's the secondary option if you're using your ground state now?
Oh, that's the thing. What, you know, that's the question.
Well, like Fire Department, they went as small as town together. And they hit them month before budget?
Yeah, we just tried to give them the $10,000 budget, an additional $10,000 a year for three years. And we renegotiated after that, and at that point right there, everybody would get double what they'd normally get in a three-year period to one year. And they still wouldn't do that. So, yeah, you said you talked to them. What is, what does the judge have to say about that?
Well, the judge is, you know, he agrees that fire department for Ballinger doesn't get enough. Okay. He agrees all the fire departments in the county don't get enough. But what they're facing is that they don't just have Ballinger Fire, they have Winters, Miles, Wingate, I believe there's another one.
Rowena.
Rowena, yeah. And all of them expect a bigger piece of the pie. And so they're gonna try and look at it this coming year. He did want me to mention, if it came up, that they have applied for these repeaters to go around the county. Now, their used equipment from the Texas, no, the Department of State.
That's something I'll take in care of.
Well, yeah, I know. But he's, he's claiming part of that credit through the COG, okay? So it's neither here nor there. He, he does agree, you know, the fire departments do not get enough money. And so we'll try and work with them this year to do something a little better than what they did last year or the year before, or.
Because with those repeaters come costs that won't be paid for.
Well, the county also increased their tax rate, so they have an increase to their budget, whereas we don't.
Well, they have $8 million sitting in there.
Sitting in the bank as well, but I'm just saying.
That's all beside the point. You know, the point is, they said no, so we need to start working with them.
Maybe we say no too. Maybe we tell you what, you and one of the council members, go see the judge. We can do that. I don't know.
Jeff says something too. Why not charge them, like, so if they're charging you, like, percentage of the calls that come from the city of Ballinger, then the percentage of the fires that y'all go fight? I mean, y'all go out of town more often than you stay inside of town. You know, how often does Rowena come into Ballinger to help fire fires? I mean, could y'all not propose to say, you know, if we go out of city of Ballinger more than, you know, to such and such fire, can we invoice or, or charge that for such fire?
We can. And we can also, if we lose five tires in a, in a fire out in the country.
Just happen.
There's nothing, there's nothing saying we can't invoice them for that equipment that is either broken or something like that.
We have mutual aid agreements with these other cities.
That's a, that's a bill we were just talking about a little bit ago. It's, it's all encompassing. When they send those out, we agree that any other agency that they have a mutual aid agreement with, we also kind with that mutual aid agreement. So, yeah, we.
Because usually addressing those mutual aid agreements, if there's damage to your equipment, who will pay for it when you're filing?
Usually, usually when you go to a mutual aid, the first eight hours is free. Then after that, you can start charging them for stuff.
It just depends on what the agreement says. A lot of bases they say, each year, it's whoever responding agency, it's their responsibility. Just to keep it.
Most of them are like that. You don't, you don't have it. It's just a straight, you tear your stuff up, you hire your stuff.
Is that within working with other fire departments?
That's any encompassing counties around us that we would go to even. Most of the time, you go, and if you tear something up, and you go to Coleman County, like we did a couple of times, if we tear something up, it's our, it's our deal.
Right.
Now, you follow FEMA and all that stuff, first, depending on whatever the hours that they set for, if it's a 12-hour period or an eight-hour period. Once that eight-hour period is over with, then they have to pay whatever goes on.
Right.
You get some money out of it. You only get what FEMA says you can get.
Right. But your mutual aid agreements are with other counties and other fire departments.
Right. Most of ours are, are the county around us, in that tier.
But that's not necessarily with the counties, so.
I suppose they could say that's all.
Right.
This is for cities with counties, that you're, you're only paying $10,000.
Right.
Mutual aid and Bingham and all that, that's an outline.
It's still a mutual aid agreement between the county and the city.
That's still an outline.
Or a contract.
Decision of the situation, that has really nothing to do with it.
Right. When you, when you make your new county. Right, when you, when you make your new county contract or whatever the city decides, you put in there. Cause I don't think it's in there other than the fact that we just do mutual aid out to the county. We don't, we don't say, this, if this gets tore up, you're gonna repair it, you're gonna pay for it.
I don't think that was the plan.
I don't know.
But then we did an annual.
It's an annual, but I don't think we ever, I don't think we ever actually changed. It's just, you sign it.
Next time, next time it comes up, we just need to look at the wording and you say that we can change it to where they take care of repairs and stuff like that, so the city and the citizens. Or county uses, or vehicles.
Winters did settle with the new price.
They did?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Forty thousand.
Forty? I was thinking there's one up to forty-five from thirty-five. No?
She said forty thousand.
Now, Winters is doing this contract that they're doing. How much are they giving to Winters?
Seven.
Seven thousand?
Ten thousand. And Winters gives signals of, and the departments decrease.
By chance, do you know how much they bring, the county brings in for that said line item for firefighting? Or, or is that business? So they bring in money, so they're giving y'all back ten thousand dollars, Winters a thousand, Miles whatever. And so that comes out of a pot somewhere. So what is that pot that they're taking it out of? Is it the entire budget? Or is it a line, a specific line item, well, let's say fifty thousand for firefighting? And they give everybody, and how much are they holding back?
Uh, I believe when I looked at the budget, it was, there was a line item for each department in there.
Right.
The one, when bulk?
No, the way I remember it, it was a while back when I looked at it last, but I remember it was like the fireman budget and then there was Winters.
Yeah, they must be. I remember, it's on the website.
Yeah.
Mike, what's your choice?
I don't like it.
You wanna try and affect the other one with a good few people.
You think they're negotiating on it? Better come down.
Probably not since Winters already.
Or come up on the fire.
Well, the budget's already passed.
Right, but then I know they're not gonna go up on the fire.
And one more that's a redo on the, on the fire agreement next year instead of the dispatch system.
Right.
I agree with that. We'll look at that whole part of it next year.
I'll make the motion. I'll make a motion to table this, tell them we'll take somebody or some buddies with them, the county officials regarding this matter and possibly the fire department.
Second? Sorry, go. Second? All papers, sir?
All right.
All right, table. All right, City Council may consider, discuss and authorize action to approve engineering contract with Hibs and Todd on the Eleventh Street Standpipe Repairs.
Eleventh Street.
That's what, thirteenth?
Yeah.
Isn't that thirteenth?
Right, I think it is thirteenth. Uh, our standpipe that was damaged during the tornado, uh, we've had, uh, a lot of engineers go up and look at it and they, uh, X-ray tested a bunch of the wells. Uh, we, we have our engineers that are, are working in our behalf, uh, negotiating with the, uh, our TML insurance company and their, uh, their engineering company. Uh, so, uh, what this is, is the contract for our engineer to, uh, start with the design of the repairs and, uh, handle all the interface with their engineer and TML, our insurance company, uh, uh, to get this thing, this repair started. Uh, they're, basically we'll need a scope of work that we put out the bid, so contractor can bid on this. They'll be involved in the, uh, the bid phase and the, uh, well, all part of it. They're, they're basically handling, uh, this repair for us. And, uh, the insurance, well, the contract is for seventy-three thousand eight hundred dollars. This would be for the engineering, our engineering company. And, uh, I, I, it wouldn't add it to this when it went out the packet, but, uh, in our conversation with the, our engineer Jordan Hibs, uh, and the insurance company, they stated the risk pool will pay for all reasonable customary costs associated with this work, which basically gave us permission to proceed with Hibs and Todd and they would pay for this work. So, and, and we're going with Hibs and Todd's cause they were the, uh, original designers of the standpipe and they've been with us since the day of the tornado. So they know all the facets of this. They've been negotiating, uh, with TML and with, uh, their engineering company. So.
Hibs and Todd has a long history at the city of Ballinger.
They, they, I think they designed their water plant.
That's correct.
Sort of treatment plant. So, I mean, there's, there's a lot of history there. Uh, but anyway, so this is the contract for that. Uh, just for the, the engineering company to start the design process or design of repairs for damage of the standpipe, the bidding phase services and construction phase services. So after the, the bid, the contractor will come, we're looking at possibly the first of the year. And then, uh, they'll help manage the contractor, making sure he's doing what he's supposed to be doing. And then the inspection part, which is after they've repaired it, making sure that the pain is correct, that, you know, everything is done that needs to be done.
And this seventy-three thousand will be paid for out of the.
Out of TML engineers.
You looked over the green chat?
Yes.
Everything go right?
It's all right. No, I can watch, but that's the way they do.
Any other questions? Yep? All right, motion to approve the engineering contract with Hibs and Todd on the Thirteenth Street Standpipe Repairs.
Same way.
Second?
Second.
All papers, yeah. City Council may consider, discuss and authorize installation of a stop sign on the corner of Seventh Street and Sergeant Avenue.
Uh, this, this is, uh, the street between Alsips on Broadway down to Eighth Street, uh, on Sergeant. And it crosses Seventh. And there's been numerous complaints of people, uh, driving faster than they probably should between the Alsips and Eighth Street. I don't know if they continue on like on past Eighth Street or if they turn on Eighth Street.
They'd go over living, about my house.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They make a big circle.
But, uh. We're looking at interruption, replacing the yield signs or we put the stops on this?
There's nothing.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, I'm not sure. There's, on Seventh Street, there's yield signs, so we're gonna replace those?
Well, that's what we're gonna say.
Okay, that's what we're gonna say.
Okay.
Well, the problem is going this way.
There's already yield signs on every block. I just wonder what made that one.
Well, the yield signs on Seventh Street, not on Sergeant.
I was going, I was going, I was.
There's yield signs on Seventh, sorry. Down to Seventh, but then there's walk down, I'm saying there's yield signs on every block going down there. What makes this street needs stop sign? When all the rest of them have.
The only yield sign. The third street.
Which one is, what, we're looking right here at the yield sign, which street is that there? That's Seventh?
That's Seventh, yes.
So Sergeant, is that one?
Sergeant's the top right.
Sergeant, Sergeant comes down this way, okay? And there's no yield sign here or here. Okay, this is Seventh Street.
And there's yield signs on each.
Yield signs on each side.
Yeah.
And, and the problem seems to occur from people going from Alsips here down to Eighth Street. They, they zoom down this, this thoroughfare. So.
So we're telling them, do we want to put a stop sign?
On Sergeant, yes.
And then leave the yields on Seventh?
Makes sense.
Well, yes, I don't know if we wanna do a four-way stop or just add two stop signs and leave the yield signs.
Frank, you live there, what is your opinion?
Well, it's what, you know, just long as you get control of the vehicles coming down that street, you know?
Do people yield if there's yield signs? Cause they got mine.
They, I see no one, they, they go and they'll pass, they hit the box, they fly up in the air and they go. I, I see it all the time. So I, I mean, I don't know what would be a good, uh.
Speed bumps?
We can. Yeah, speed bumps.
Oh, I mean, there's only two blocks right there that people speed up. Um, I don't know, have any accidents, it's happening.
Frank has little kids, there's little kids that.
No, no, I understand that. Um, if you do add stop signs to Sergeant, remove this yield sign on Seventh Street. Cause that's like having a stop sign and a yield sign. You don't need that. Now, if you want to, you can probably reverse that and put the yields, yield signs on Sergeant instead of Seventh. Is Seventh the issue or Sergeant's issue?
Sergeant's.
Sergeant's issue. I would, because if you go down Sergeant, down toward Eighth Street, you have a yield sign on Eight, Nine, Ten, Eleven, Twelve. That's the only street that does not have a yield sign going that direction. So if you want to, let's start and reverse them.
Just move it in for trial, see how that goes.
See how that goes. See if they do slow down. If they don't, then we'll relook at it.
Yeah, because actually Seventh Street has some natural drainage.
Yeah, they have the natural drainage that slows them down.
Let's calm down on Seventh.
Sorry. That's the only thing I can.
I mean, there's been, there's been a few cold accidents, but not quite a few on it, but there has been.
There's a ton of truck traffic coming down Seventh Street.
Big truck traffic.
Because of Alsips or?
Yeah, Alsips, there's sometime you'll see somebody coming to the level of steel, they don't wanna get up their own problem.
Tankers.
They drag that high center there on the next street.
But if, we do gotta build a speed bump going to the, I don't know if you have the signs of speed, speed signs or the vehicles, there are no signs of speeding or anything.
Well, if we, if we.
Put a stop sign, they had to use four over.
In reality, is we have a speed bump in our state. I live on that, night comes zipping by me.
Yeah.
Miles.
Yes.
I'm going for, I'm going, there's gonna be, there's gonna be a kid to hit, cause there's kids walking in the middle of night.
Well.
And, you know.
That's gonna happen.
And if we, if we reverse the, if we reverse the, the yield signs as a, maybe a first step, is that something we wanna look at? Or?
I'd prefer they be stop signs myself, but I'm, I'm flexible.
I mean, you, I mean, I just need the, the dog to hit. The dog can hit around there, but.
You know where you gotta move poles.
Yeah.
If you put a yield sign.
Place there. Put the new poles up, cause in case you have your magic, you have it there.
Yeah, that's true.
Yes, sir.
If you put a yield sign there, you're gonna back up traffic around that Alsips and it's already horrible or anything.
And well, we put a stop sign.
Yeah, we do, he got the, you call it all the air trucks back up there and you put a stop sign.
What about the big speed hump? You know, the slow ones, not the.
You remember that?
Hell, yeah.
Not the rattle your teeth, not a, not a, oh, is that a speed?
One mile.
But you know, one of those big slow ones, those wide ones?
Speed hump.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah. So you just put them out?
No. I would rather try the stop sign.
You know what, I, I don't think they're gonna.
I don't think, I'm not sure that if you put a yield sign, it tell you.
That'd be the same thing.
Where I live. I'm not.
I don't think you're doing many other places.
I don't think.
So should we, do we have stop signs in Scotts or what?
Do you want? I mean, the stop sign, a lot of people want the stop.
But it's, it's gonna take them a long.
You guys are at Alsips a lot, so they might. I mean, pulling people over, why not?
They should get used to it.
I'm fine with it anyway, it'll go, whatever. Stops and then stop.
Stop sign.
Stop signs on Sergeant.
Can you take the yields down?
And then take the yields down on Sergeant.
Cause there's kind of, there's already a bit there.
Correct.
Seems like we might put up some warnings, someone's ever doing that. Cause sometimes with bad accidents, we first install a traffic light or something.
Right.
Then we're gonna take the sign out, it's in there. It's not like we put a warning for all.
Stop sign? Stop sign? Stop sign? So install the stop signs on Sergeant and remove the yield signs on Seventh? Is that the concession?
See, we may be starting to trend. Everybody in town is going, well, stop signs are better out now.
Yeah.
I mean, really, you can put eleven, eleven in every B, but eleven, you would slow the traffic down, go by miles. I'm not saying they don't even do it, I'm just saying it's, it's a citywide problem. Yeah. Anyway.
All right, motion to install a stop sign on the corner of Seventh Street on Sergeant Avenue and remove the yield signs on Seventh Street that are currently in place.
Okay.
Second?
Second.
All papers, yeah.
I was gonna let you know that we have to do an ordinance to make this enforceable. So basically, um, that ordinance will tell what you just said and then it will tell the city manager to, uh, put out the proper signage. We'll need the ordinance before it be enforceable.
Okay, so I have to put that on the next agenda to do that? Anything else? City Council may consider, discuss and authorize installation of signs to designate Eleventh Street from East Avenue to Country Club Road as a school zone. Which is it?
That's the Eleventh Street, uh, between the football field up to the Country Club Road.
Cause by Vista Grande.
But it's not even that far. It's, uh.
The top left edge is my house.
Okay, here's.
Channel Field.
Yeah, there's Chandler Field.
Football Field.
Yep. Uh, this is the football field, this is the parking lot behind the elementary, that's Chandler Field, uh, there's Gore's House.
With S O S on top.
Yeah. Where the green line ends is, is a four-way stop.
Yeah.
And down here, there's a, it's an offset and there's a four-way stop here as well.
Correct.
Okay, so now on the other side, on Eighth Street, it starts at this road, but I think it's fall short. One, two, no, I think it continues on up. Yeah, yeah. So, uh, but, so there is, is a, a school zone on Eighth Street, uh, but there's no established school zone on Eleventh Street.
Yes, sir.
There is no established school zone on any city street besides the highway and Eighth Street. I have mapped this out. I have asked, I guess from riding grounds here, for it to be put on council, to get designated school zones around every school.
Correct.
And it has never been done. So if y'all don't mind table on this, and I'll give you the map and every place where there needs to be a stop sign, no cell phone sign, all that stuff. And it will cover in all streets in Ballenger, not just Eleventh Street.
Right.
So you're talking around the schools specifically?
Around the schools, that, to cover East, Eleventh, Tonda, Ninth, um, Eighth, Broad, everything, Thirteenth Street even. Yeah.
If you give me that map, I will maybe do an ordinance for basketball, so if you could get that to my city.
So can we do that all at one meeting, the ordinance and the handover?
And then be able to do them all together?
All at once, that'd be good.
Rather than doing individually?
And basically, I mean, granted, I know there's, there's a light on Eighth Street, which probably needs to be changed out.
Cause it's antiquated.
Yeah, and just basically put a time limit on the school zones, you know, from eight thirty to four o'clock.
Some of them are the ones on the state highway?
Yeah. And I mean, we don't, we don't have to get them lit or nothing, but, you know, that way, you know, all the streets are covered, there's nothing. Technically, it's thirty miles an hour.
Head to chat.
Just along those same lines, I've got complaints from people on whatever that street is that runs next to the football field that meets Eleventh at that intersection, saying the same thing. I've had people come to me, talk about needing the school zone there, so between Eighth and Eleventh, along the football field, I don't.
Oh, on Eighth Street.
But if he's, if he's mapping everything out, I would assume that that would be included, but I would just wanna make sure that that's included as well.
Is it tape?
East, Broad, Avenue A, B, C, I don't know about C.
Well, C is the same country club road, isn't it?
Yeah. Cause it, what I did, really designated was from the school property, two blocks each direction.
Surrounding the schools.
Surrounding the schools.
Correct.
Is what, I mean, and that's, I, I generally look at, you know, San Angelo and stuff like that, and it's around two, three blocks, and it's around the schools.
Yeah. Come. All right, we're good to table?
Motion to table.
Second?
Second.
All papers say aye. I'll get that back to you. Good. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chair. All right. I didn't see any building permits, did we? We had some that popped up. Okay, Steve has been on vacation, so he's waiting on him to get back and sort of approval bill for them. Yes, uh, I think they added them to, okay, this one is Carrie Getz. Uh, Carrie Getz at one zero six East Avenue, uh, she's adding a shipping container to her backyard, I believe. Uh, they don't want Strong Avenue. That's the job site address, so, uh, and I'm, I'm assuming it's gonna be in the backyard. Uh, Steve went out, looked at it, talked to her, uh, he had no trouble with where they were gonna put it. Yes, sir.
Question, I was told at one point that there's an ordinance against shipping containers in that area of town.
I thought it was the hotel.
I was told they couldn't be past Fourteenth Street.
Okay. Now, this is Strong, so it's down.
I understand that, but I'm telling you that from Fourteenth back, I was told nothing, no shipping containers could be placed in there, that it was against ordinance.
I can double check on that, and we can, uh, not approve this one, and move to the next one. Give that, that's up. Uh, the next one is, uh, A Lindley at eight zero three North Six, that's your mailing address. The job site address, eight zero six North Six, uh, a metal carport, twelve by twelve, uh, seven foot high. It's gonna be new, and, uh, he went out and looked and said it would not be a problem.
In front or back or side?
It does not say.
Better assume the side driveway, we're not confused.
Next thing? I, I would assume so. Okay, and the next one will be Edward Horton at eleven hundred Eleventh Street. He's gonna, this is a ten by twelve by eight foot covered deck. I'm assuming it's in the backyard. Yes, in the backyard. And that's it for building permits. All right, motion to accept, which is Horton. Horton. And Lindley, and we will table Carrie Getz. Carrie Getz. All right. Second?
Second.
All papers say aye? Thank you. All right, here's the city minister's bi-weekly report, please. Uh, yes, uh, really, the only thing I had right now, uh, we're working real hard on different contracts, uh, Tony had caught up, it's kind of the first year. Uh, some of them involve grants, we have, uh, our, our contract for the fast grant came through, uh, I don't know if you've seen that yet or not.
No.
No. I, I think it just. I can't get it to him until after I sign, that's what they told me. Okay.
Yo, that thing you sent me today.
Right. I've got a copy of it, I can get to you, see you through review it, but it's with the Texas Department of Agriculture, I don't care, maybe. Thing you can do to, you know, see that and you don't get the grant, so, uh, let's see, uh, well, we've gone through the contracts we had this, this week. We got, uh, another set of four or five contracts that we're trying to get through for the next agenda. But overall, the grant process, uh, our jag grant, we need to go out for bid for the vehicle, or go through buy board for the police vehicle. And our fast grant's on track, there's, they sent me a lot of, like a whole thing, uh, startup. Uh, there's, there's just a big checklist we're gonna have to go through, uh, so we're starting on that process as well. Let's see, we should be here in first of November, first week or so, on the, uh, the street paving grant, so we, we should actually get that.
Did they ever come looking, you said they were coming to look?
They did come, uh.
Coming to the corner.
Right, uh, uh, they took a couple of council members, myself, street supervisor, they just mainly wanted to make sure we hadn't started on anything already. And took pictures, you know, made sure it was the places that we were, said it was in the grant, so, uh, they called back, said everything looked really good. Uh, we should expect, uh, well, actually, we went through a, it was a, like, like a call-in, conference call, and, uh, they said everything looked good. So we should be seeing something first week in November-ish, uh, so they said it takes them usually X amount of time to get these contracts out to us. So, or, you know, notifications, so we're looking forward to that. Uh, water plant, we, we're still tweaking our water plant, uh, apparently, there's still some different colored water around the city. Uh, we're flushing, we're flushing the, 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 the main water tower, uh, hoping to get, we don't flush it all at once, cause you'd lose a lot of water pressure. So we're flushing it a little at a time, trying to cycle anything that may be in there. We talked a little last time about using sodium permethanate to treat the, uh, manganese in the water. We've dialed the sodium permethanate all the way back, uh, because we started using primarily just Lake Ivy water. Uh, waiting for the Ballenger Lake to quit, uh, changing. As of Sunday, we started adding a little Lake Ivy water back into it, uh, and we're looking at the possibility of, of using hydrogen peroxide, which is an oxidizer, to go in. And to basically treat the water. We had some issues with pumps, we were trying to force the, so, uh, hydrogen peroxide through the pumps, but the membranes, uh, kept, uh, kept it from working. So we're, we're having to swap out some pumps, but, uh, hopefully this week we'll start with the hydrogen peroxide, and hopefully that'll do the trick, clearing up the water. And the manganese, and we're working with, uh, Jacob and Martin out of, uh, Adely, uh, an engineering firm, uh, with our, with our water guy. So, uh, but we're, we're trying, trying to get that, that color out there.
Are the tanks, are they, are they new, are they old, how old are the tanks?
The tanks, uh.
Or tanks?
Are, well.
The towers?
Like our water tower?
Yeah, well, they.
Well, you know, you're talking about the plant or we're here to store it? Well, it's, I don't know, we've been there since, since forever, at least they, it's, I mean.
And that's where the water runs for a lot there?
Well, uh, basically, we put water in there, which gives the, the whole town a lot of pressure. Right. Okay, now, we have an inspection service that comes out every year to maintain it, so, uh, you know, they, they come and if anything needs to be done or touched up on the inside, uh, that's what they do. So, and, uh, our water tank, our tower is, is, is good. The stand pipe, they got damage in tornado, it's turned off, so nothing really affects that. So basically, it's just the water coming, the raw water that we're having to treat, so.
So the pumps, you were talking about the membrane rejecting the hydrogen peroxide, are you putting pumps downstream of those to treat the water?
Well, uh, our sodium permethanate was injected a little at the lake, a little, uh.
Yeah, with the membrane for accepting.
Right, but, but the, the hydrogen peroxide is a different.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking, that's what I'm saying.
What, it had the new.
The membrane for rejecting the hydrogen peroxide. So you're going to inject it in a different place, so it doesn't affect the membrane. Cause those, those things are pretty sensitive.
They are, they are.
To whatever.
What, what we're doing is, is just swapping out the pump, uh, we have a, uh, uh, you have a certain type of pump, and, and it was, it was basically, uh, dissolving the, the, the hydrogen peroxide. Cause of the membranes, it wouldn't, it was, uh, I'm, I'm losing my word here. It wasn't able to push it, it was dissolving, okay? Yeah, yeah, okay, so, uh, changing our pump, we, we called Leonard, uh, Pump Services and talked to him about it, and, and all we gotta do is change the pump. Which, which will push it a different way. I can give you a lot more about it when I look at my notes.
No, it's okay, I mean, I, I've dealt with them brands now, I knew there was, there's a way, there's sensitivity to certain things, and sometimes you have to inject your chemical downstream level.
Right.
Let them do their work.
Right.
Inject your chemical downstream, but they will reject.
Yeah, well, I think we've got several different injection points, and depending on what's going on with the manganese, you know, you can inject it right at the lake. Plant it a little further down the street, so, uh, but our problem is, is really not the injection points, it's the pump we're using. Uh, it's, it's causing the problem, so, uh, I can't think of anything, uh, Long Star Market's coming up, and we had already shut the little piece of road down for that. The chamber required about a Christmas parade, but then they, they came back, uh, and I guess they're gonna do it later, but we know that's upcoming, uh.
What's the whole of the water plant?
Uh, they're gonna be working on that this week, uh, we got some things worked out with the concrete supplier, uh, that was supposed to be supplying that, and, uh, so we're pumping that out. And gonna start fixing that this week.
What's the ETA for returning all rentals?
Returning the.
The rental, the stuff that's in there?
I wanna say two weeks, two weeks, tops.
Okay. You have a veteran state parade too on the eleventh, November?
That is correct, yes, veteran state parade on the eleventh. And that had also been approved, like, six months ago. Yeah.
I know she's gotten approval from the state, you're telling them we're all good, get on the veteran parade. Cause that would be your Monday at any moment.
Right.
Oh, I'm not very low, generally.
How are they doing, how are they doing on the K nine?
Uh, we put down, uh, we sent half payment for the K nine already, um, cage that has been ordered, and all of being installed next week. And we just spent a little bit more funds to finish paying for the K nine and the cage.
Okay.
But he's set to go, uh, to San Antonio for two weeks on the number of, travel arrangements already have been made.
Correct.
All that stuff.
Okay.
And we're working on kennel for the house and all that stuff too.
Right.
So.
Did, was there a contract?
Working on a contract.
This is the officer's gonna do the, uh.
Justin Amari Mar.
Who pays for it?
A M A R O.
Justin.
Justin Collins, someone.
Did they send one or we need to make one?
What?
We'll have to make one, I'm contracted.
Yeah.
They don't typically have one of the.
They, he has some that he was gonna send me, but he hasn't afforded me like the generic type.
Right, right.
But he said, I said he would have one going, I mean, he's playing off the evening, so whatever.
Typically, you have to pay him, um, I'm sure, for about, for three hours, three and a half hours a week for taking care of the animal, feeding it, brushing it, and so. The way I set him up, or I'm gonna set it up, is that means you only keep him on shift for like thirty-six and a half hours a week at the city, and then he goes home, and we pay him the rest of his forty hours, and that way we don't incur overtime. Cause overtime can be pretty high.
Correct.
What kind of dog?
It's a, that's separate.
Dog?
Uh, no, I think it's for.
Kind of medium, like a German shepherd.
I have a picture to show you if you want.
Uh, other than that, I think that's all we have here. Here request a future agenda, City Council.
Yes, sir, I have one.
Yes, sir.
We were provided monthly, monthly financial.
Yes, sir.
I would like to on the agenda for us to have an opportunity to, to discuss it.
Okay.
And also, I would like on the agenda, a list of the outstanding vendors that we owe for, for discussion.
And will you have the, um, the checks?
Check, Christian.
Check with Mr. Force.
All right, pay, like we don't pay, as far as payment, checks, who's in writing, like, before?
Yeah, for, for the month. Do you already have the school zones on for the next agenda, you should have done that, and the ordinance for the Eleventh Street, let's see, the stand pipe? Wait, did I read that wrong?
No, that was thirteen.
Thirteenth, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, it was thirteen.
No, it was the stop sign, we needed an ordinance for the stop sign.
Pat's gonna do that as far as switching this forward.
But you have it on the next agenda, correct?
Yeah. Is that it? Any else? Nope, awesome, she was just piling it all up at once, good deal. All right, thank you everyone for coming in, we're about to go into executive session on some items we need to discuss. Appreciate y'all coming in tonight, if you wanna hang out and wait, that's your call, I don't think the weather's too bad out there.
May I say a observance before we go? May I say something before we go?
My guess?
Um, there's been a lot said over the last couple of months, and you know, for people who claim to be Christians, sure don't act like it, because they're being rude. They're retaliating against people, and they're name-calling, and it's, it's, whether is this, is this twenty nineteen, or is this eighteen hundred? You know, getting ready for the Civil War and all that, it's ridiculous. There's people that, you can't even walk down the street, now, I've not, I, I've had a couple of times when people have been rude, turn and walk across the street from me. I'm sorry, I don't have the place. Now, if, if that's the way this town is going to act, because people have the right to speak up, they have the right to speak out, but then, you're retaliated against? And they're still campaigning out to get rid of Tommy? Oh, yeah. It's going on, and if this is the way this town is gonna be, I just assume we back to Arizona. This is ridiculous. Hey, look in the mirror, people, look in the mirror, bear.
All right. Thank y'all. All right, City Council will reconvene in regular session to take any action that been deemed necessary as a result of the executive session. Mr. Rick, would you please make that motion?
That we reconvene?
We already reconvened.
Okay. Well, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the layoff of three employees in the street department and offer them two weeks severance package.
I'll second that.
On paper, say aye.
Aye.
All right. All right. Motion to adjourn?
Salute.
Second?
Second.
On paper, say aye.
Aye.